Buenas dan hafedai, todo samzuni mangagipaguna ogan. Mangagitwini para ta kodukta esti junta i ma'agangi Special Economic Service. Idian ifetsa paguna ani July twenty six. I'm sorry, July twenty third, two thousand and thirteen. Esti lasti eski akad, danti pasao lasti eski. Esti Special Economic Service ma'futma estina grupu para uajuda i legislatura za ni administration. Ar para o ma'atan esti higinak ago i kadasakan i departamentus ya para i dima'alu ki fiscal year budget za i Special Economic Service. Por o atan i gubernun za ni legislatura. Nu ni kontu ginak ago niya za ni kontu na salapi si niomalum. Za poma rekomenda watu gi legislatura, hafa poma adopta i dima'alu ka'nu budget of the government of Guam. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Special Economic Service meeting. Today's the twenty third of July and it is at ten AM, ten twenty AM in the morning. This is a meeting of the Special Economic Service which was formed to assist the legislature in the formation of policy regarding the financial matters concerning the government of Guam. Part of the requirement of the Special Economic Service Group is to meet to discuss the FY two thousand for the fiscal revenue projections of the government of Guam. In addition to other reports that are mandated by law to be given to the organization in developing and formulating its recommendations for the legislative consideration by the legislature in the formation of the annual budget of the government of Guam. Thank you very much for joining us this morning. I have members of the legislature who have joined us this morning for this meeting. To my immediate right is the Vice Speaker of the Legislature, Senator B.J. Cruz. Senator Frank Ogun is immediately to his right and we proceed down to the end of the table and we find Senator Michael Liptiako. To the left is Senator Chris Duñez and next to him is the Legislative Secretary, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Senator Tom Adda joins us as well, as well as Senator Aminia Moshida. Good morning. The statutory members of the Special Economic Service Group includes the Director of Revenue and Taxation, the Office of the Public Auditor, the Legislature and Committee on Appropriations Chairperson, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, economists, the Research Director for the Guam Visitors Bureau, the Director of Department of Administration, Director of GITA, the economist at the Department of Labor, the Director of the Bureau Budget and Management Research, who is making his way in right now. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to then proceed with the agenda as given to each of the members and announced in our media. The first item on the agenda is the overview of tourism. And this is usually presented by the Director of Research or Administrator of Research and Evaluation at the Guam Visitors Bureau. This morning we have with us Ms. Debbie Phillips and she's had a handout that she's given out to all the members. And if you wish to follow along, you are welcome to do so in the handout that she's given us. We'll go ahead and recognize Debbie, thank her for joining us this morning and have her begin the presentation.
Good morning everybody. For fiscal year to date, two thousand and thirteen, from October two thousand and twelve to July seventeen, we've hit the one million mark, so it's at one million thirty thousand three hundred fifteen. So the remainder of July eighteenth to the thirty first, our projection is eighty-four thousand three seventy-eight. August is set at one thirty-three thousand six and September at one hundred twelve thousand eight hundred thirty-six with a total projection of one million three one three zero zero nine for the fiscal year. I'm not sure if a copy of this was made, but it projects it out to twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen. If I can provide a copy. Yeah, this one's a little different. So FY thirteen's projection will be a little higher than our one point three million in the January report. For the tourism expenditures, there's this sheet like this. And that projects it out to, it shows fiscal year two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve actuals and then two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen projected. Include the local spend calculated out to possible hotel occupancy tax collections and jobs that can be sustained with that particular number and visitor arrivals. And all the variables that were used in the calculations are listed at the bottom under notes.
I know you qualify your presentation, local spend per person is one point seven five multiplier. So is that inclusive of the multiplier effect or is this reflective of the per visitor expenditure?
That's just the total visitor.
That's the total?
Total multiplier effect.
So it's inclusive of the multiplier effect, it's not necessarily, let's say for example, two thousand and twelve, two point four million dollars divided by one point two is equivalent to whatever the expenditure rate of each visitor is to our island community. You already included the multiplier effect of one point seven five, in other words.
I only use it once. I don't include it.
No, but it's included in this?
Yeah, if it's going across, that's how it calculates.
Okay, I guess just a follow up question, when was your multiplier factor created or reviewed?
The first year we did a tourism satellite account, an economic impact of tourism industry. It was in two thousand and five, but we didn't want it in two thousand and ten. So they-
So you're using your most recent, two thousand and ten?
Yes, it hasn't changed. If we're that, prior to the TSA is what we call it, sometimes it's confused with the airport TSA.
Right.
We were using one point five, which was much lower. I mean, you'll hear people out there saying, no, it's one point five, but I tend to think it's one point, it's closer to one point seven five.
Yeah, the only reason why Mr. Speaker am requiring is because obviously the multiplier effect does adjust based on economic conditions. I mean, as we look at the yen increasing or devaluing versus the dollar, the reality is that multiplier effect as it applies to Japanese visitors may decrease accordingly. So, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, who prepares your hotel occupancy tax figures here?
Projections?
Yeah.
We do it internally, senior management, the research department. We include variables like average length of stay, the hotel room rate, what percentage stays at what. You have the higher end that stay, say maybe twenty, between twenty and thirty percent that stay in higher costing rooms opposed to the seventy to eighty percent that stay at a more, I think, lower rate ones.
Do you get any information from Department of Revenue Taxation as to who is and who is not paying the hotel occupancy tax?
No, not by property. Not by property. That's one question we periodically always ask when we do the audit of the tourist attraction fund. And there's about fifty hotels and they do look at them from a trend analysis and all that. And they do a lot of things to ensure that they are getting all of that. So they have been very diligently because, you know, the pool is relatively small, you know, so it can be fully accounted for. So at least when my last discussion with the auditors, you know, with Deloitte, because of concern I had with Visa visa gross receipts tax, you know, and the non-posting, I were the assurance this number was correct. And, long story short, they went back and almost looked at every one of them, just about.
When was that discussion?
This year, for FY, for the FY two thousand and twelve release of the tourist attraction fund audit.
John, do you have any information as to how current all the hotel properties are with their payment of hotel occupancy tax?
Yes, normally we look at the audit findings from Deloitte. And if there's findings that require us to look into, then at that time we will look into those things, in other words. But like the public auditor says, there's a list of all these hotels that are paying the occupancy tax. So if there's a discrepancy or what, whatever the recommendation, we look into those things.
Would it surprise you if the word on the street is that upwards of a dozen of these properties have not paid their hotel occupancy tax last year?
Yes, that would surprise me. At least based on my discussion, there was, there was concern because of the, you know, with the termination of the POS at DRNT. There was concern, were we capturing all, all of the revenue in the right buckets and by the right people? And I had a very lengthy discussion with them and they were very confident that these numbers are correct. Now, if someone registered and has not filed at all, that would be a different story. But once you file and they're in the system, if you've only done one month and you didn't do the following month, they would catch that. So if it's someone who's registered as a hotel and has never filed, you're not going to catch that.
No, not so much never filed. And the reason for this, John, is I have a letter going to you today, a FOIA request. Because I was at lunch with some people last week and I was gloating about the fact that, you know, we've had so much TAF money that we're passing out money to different places. And the fact that we might be nearing thirty million dollars for this year in collections, I think we're at twenty-seven, right?
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-six is the projection.
Twenty-seven. And this person who's, who I would consider to be very well informed, looked at me and said, we'd probably be getting closer to forty if everybody was paying.
John, can you just check that? Can you, can you check if any other hotels have not filed GRTs, I mean hotel occupancy tax?
Yeah, we can look into that.
I mean, there's only fifty of them.
Yeah, no, I, and-
You can check that in thirty minutes.
There is, look, we did find, for example, in our preliminary audit on the real property tax.
No, no, we're not talking about real property.
No, no, no. What I'm trying to say here is we found five hundred pieces of property registered as hotel. Whereas that's when we went to find out what's the number actually. So there's a little, you know, so the data in the real property tax needs to be cleaned up because that doesn't quite match the data from the GRT end of things.
Yeah, but also, John, I mean, the business license, I mean.
Yes, we'll definitely look into that, but like I said earlier, if there's anything that when we discuss these things with the auditors and there's some discrepancies or anything, we do look into those things.
Then I'm confident that at least for those who have filed that they have been accounted for. Someone that's never filed, that we wouldn't know.
Yes.
They wouldn't be classified.
And that's what we're looking at, people that if they're not filing, we look into those things.
Right. For the record, this is not an oversight here in the records.
I know, and I just want to make sure because including small hotels and big hotels, we're looking at the number of fifty?
Approximately fifty plus, yeah.
Okay.
And total, that are quote, registered as hotels. And we look at a database of those fifty plus.
They have a business license.
Right, and those, and just excuse my-
Are you saying like twelve of them aren't paying any hotel occupancy tax?
Yeah.
Or the rumor on the street is?
Yeah.
I would be very surprised.
Okay, just, just so you're aware, John, I am sending you a FOIA request because I think it's imperative that we, that we dispel that because I don't, I don't like that floating. And for someone to tell me that was very disconcerting. And especially since eighty percent of the hotels are diligent and faithful in paying their taxes. It's not fair that the rumor is that there are some that are not.
Yeah, that would be separate, remember, there was a discussion a couple of years ago about how hotels, you know, whatever is the rack rate and then it would be adjusted for food and adjusted for whatever. That would be a different situation, okay? Whereas that would be recorded as gross, you know, there was that rumor that hotel rates were being adjusted for pool usage and food and activities. That one is a different story and I can't speak to that one.
Can, can, maybe I can just add, when we talk about the occupancy taxes and all that, we're talking about the eleven percent, am I right?
As far as I know.
Right, and then, and then, and none of the hotels today are away from paying any of that, am I right? Okay, as it relates to the business privileges taxes, which everybody knows as the GRTs, that's also a separate matter, right?
Now, that's combined, you know, in the total of GRT. And so how much of that came from hotels is a different, they would have to know that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
You file return, you're going to file GRT, you're going to file hotel occupancy, you're going to file the alcohol beverage, you know.
Right, there's, there's all the numbers in the back, am I right?
Correct.
And, and, and we should be able to tell if, if, if a hotel is paying or not paying based on the, on the line item that they're at, right?
Correct. Correct. And Deloitte always keeps a mirror image of that to make sure. So if any month is missing from a particular hotel, I would see it.
And, and John, you'll be able, you can, like, if there's only fifty, then we can just look it up and work on it and show if anyone's paying, okay?
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll send you, I have the my document. Thank you very much, Debbie?
Yes, sir. When we're looking at the numbers, now, is the committee going to entertain your number that is being presented here for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen of twenty-six to eighty-six, twenty-six million two hundred and eighty-six thousand? Because legislation which has recently adopted that pegs that number at twenty-six, five, eight, six, something to that effect. So, so, I mean, in terms of what this body really should consider as your projected revenue slash, I mean, John, and John, this is, this would include yourselves in this discussion because we were assured that the twenty-six, five or twenty-six, six was the appropriate figure to, to look at in terms of the anticipated revenues for fiscal year thirteen. Now, what we're seeing here, Mrs. Speaker, obviously it's only three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars shy, but it also would reflect any of the authorizations and appropriations made by this body prior to today and also for the balance of the fiscal year. So what figure do, does a committee entertain in terms of looking at the hotel occupancy tax?
For next year, it would be the twenty-six, nine?
No, only the thirteen.
No, but we already entertained that, we're not entertaining adopting any new revenues for twenty thirteen.
But then a representative from GDB is coming back with the twenty-six, two.
The reason why that number changes, if you compare it to, say, the January report that was filed, is because of the change in visitor rights. That number is driven by the change, all these other columns across.
No, no, I understand that multiplier effect, but, okay, I'm good, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not going to change anything on that, we've already changed the twenty thirteen in the bill that was passed. And so, for the purpose of this meeting, in terms of that, we can look at the twenty fourteen number, on what we would consider reasonable. Debbie, any?
Sure, okay. I'd like to get into the individual markets now.
Okay.
We're all familiar-
Any questions on the, the spend? And notes on that?
If, back to the hotel occupancy taxes, if you look at our other reports that break it down by monthly, it's not really representative of the amount of business done for that particular month? Because if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, the hotel occupancy taxes that are filed, say it's for April, but it's filed in June, it will go in the June slot, right? It will be posted in June, but not necessarily for April.
As they come in, and then the occupancy, they would have to turn that money over the following month on the twentieth.
But it's booked for the, the actual month the stay occurs?
Yes, for their purposes, it's, it's collected, I guess for treasure Guam and DOA's purposes when they actually receive the money. So it's a little bit waiting there.
Okay, alright.
What usually happens at the end of the year, we're, we're on a cash basis, what was actually paid in?
Right.
And so when you come to October, again, for September, you accrue October.
Right.
And how, September, September.
Previous year, yes.
That's how the number, that's how you have that account received.
Alright.
I was just referring to late payments.
Oh.
You know, like they're six months late, okay, we'll just put it in. Yeah, right. Okay, so to the Japan market, we're all aware of the two-twelve incident, which we call what happened in Tu'on. And we had our in-country research company in Japan, they did an in-kind online study for us on whether that incident had actually affected their perspective of Guam and it really didn't. I could probably give you a copy of this. And their general feeling is that that type of incident could happen anywhere. It wasn't germane to Guam, it's not, it only happens on Guam, so it wasn't that. And it did impact the numbers a little, but what's impacting the Japan numbers more so now is the exchange rate. So that means they're domestic, they're staying home, they're doing, the travel they're doing is domestic. So which means that outbound travel has shrunk, but Guam's market share has grown. Smaller pie makes their chunk look bigger, so, what is it?
So is that, is that a reverse? Because I thought our, the, our share of the outbound market has continually declined over the previous years.
It has, but it's grown a little. When I, when I say it's grown, it means it grows, maybe a little fraction of it, but it's still growing.
Okay, fine.
And the charter flights expected between July and September from Japan will happen between July twelfth, which has already passed to September twentieth, so that's basically a summer travel. I'm just picking and choosing the highlights from this thing. Now, the Korea market, as you can see, has really grown by leaps and bounds. And the reason for that major, the major reason for that can be attributed to the availability of hotel rooms. Japanese aren't coming, so the hotels are freeing up a lot of room blockage. That and there's, there were some popular Korean dramas out here filming on Guam, so they're showing in Korea. And so that's picked up a lot of interest in the Korean market. China, we're still, China and Russia, we're still, nothing's really drastically changed with regard to the visa waiver for that, but the arrivals are still, especially Russia, they're still, not gangbusters like Korea, but there's still an even flow of that incoming.
I'm just curious, Debbie, on the, there's, there's more of an ease, there's an easier process, if I characterize it correctly, for a Russian visitor to come than a Chinese visitor? Under the, it's not a visa waiver, it's not, it's, it's an administrative-
It's a government approving the visa hesitation.
Yet, yet we're seeing that the numbers between Russia and China are still, that the Russia number is not as large as the China number. Is that just a function of volume of Chinese?
Right now, there's only one airline serving Russia. Under the Russia paragraph, Vladivostok Air, it'll be start, is their scheduled start November third. So that's from, probably going to mispronounce these words, but from, from Vladivostok and cover us, there's going to be direct flights on this Vladivostok air. So that will hopefully clear the way for additional seats to go on from Russia.
So there's a function of seats there?
Yeah. It's, I think a hundred fifty some seats per aircraft? And also, this is the first year we've done exit surveys with the Russian market. So we do them quarterly with Russia, Taiwan and Hong Kong. That's based on frequency. With Russia, we do have exit surveys, so the data you see here is actually from that exit survey, the prepaid and the annual spend. Now, a lot of times, people will say, well, Russians spend upwards of three to four to six to ten thousand dollars total. But that's at different destinations that offer different goods and services. So this is what we've been tracking through our exit survey.
And what are those numbers?
The prepaid per person is over three thousand and then the on-island spend is like sixteen hundred per person. But per person, that includes even little kids, that was calculated out. If you took the total Russian visitors and you multiplied it by that, that would be your spend. Not per adult, it's just per visitor.
I know, do we still have pretty much the same kind of issue with regards to these prepaid spend? Where we don't capture the local tax dollars on these, okay, as we have with our other markets?
Well, the ground handlers for them, you have local ground handlers and that money, they, they pay them, that comes to the island. And they, these businesses pay their taxes and John probably has those. There's only, I'd say maybe a dozen Russian ground handlers. Now, for the exit surveys for the other markets, we do at the airport for the Russians because they arrive so early in the morning, because we're pressed to find field workers, so we go to the ground handlers and they do it for us, which means we really don't. It is, it's a very small expense to us, but they don't have a problem doing that for us. But they do, I'm sure they pay their business privilege tax and all the other government fees. I do have a copy of that Japan study that we did with regard to the sentiments of the Japanese in the two-twelve incident, if you'd like a copy of that.
Okay, I think so. Senator would like to read it.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? We have a five-year projection, yes, Senator?
Just a quick follow up, I know that there was, there were public statements made that we may have not been able to accommodate a good number of visitors who otherwise would have come to Guam. Now, with the char, anticipated charter flight from Russia, from Russia in November and then you're tracking numbers, are we able, I understand that there's like four hundred and seventeen additional rooms that should be opening within a year. So are we able to accommodate the increase in anticipated visitorship?
I ran some capacity numbers, maybe sometime late last year. And if, if you took the total number of rooms we have, eight thousand two hundred eighty-five, and that's the number I used in my calculations, and you use the two and a half people per room, three point five days length of stay, we could accommodate up to one point seven million visitors. Now, the, the, the reason why we didn't have, or visitors, potential visitors could not find rooms is because of room blockage. And that's just standard hotel, and so the, the Japanese are now, because of the rise in the demand from the Korean market and the lesser demand in the Japan market, they're actually a lot at ease in releasing some of their blockage. But the Japan numbers are expected to pick up late July, August.
I know that, one final question, Mrs. Speaker, I mean, I know that one of the statements, this is towards the Japan market now, one of the statements made by an economist on island is that when the rate reaches one oh seven, then, then from the visitor perspective, that may have some impact in terms of number of visitors coming to Guam. Have you been tracking that and seeing what the implications conceivably could be or what it has been in the just the last three, four weeks?
I'm sorry, I missed that first part of the track, the second-
Well, it's just the yen, the yen versus the dollar. What, if any impact, because she did also mention-
Oh, there is an impact. We're hurting right now because of the yen.
What are we looking at, I mean?
We're hoping it picks up at the late summer, end of July and August. It's, it's just who has control over the yen, right? But that's what's, that's what's hurting us now. To pick up the so-called slack or to fill the rooms-
The Koreans.
Is the Korean market and the Russians, and you know, the Russians like to stay two weeks, an average of two weeks. Chinese basically stay six days, those are the higher spend visitors.
So your impact is, is that you're seeing more visitors, I mean, I know you mentioned stay home with domestic vacations, but are you looking at, at conceivably a two point five percent impact with your projected rev, projected visitorship?
Yeah, we are, our, our marketing reps are trying to keep us posted on that and give us a heads up and what to expect and what's coming down the pipes. So we are keeping track of that.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, thank you, Ms. Speaker.
So on your one point seven, then, that's the full year. Were, were the turnaways, because this is what some marketers are saying, the turnaways a result of peak season or, or the peaks of seasons, meaning non, non-peak travel is not, not filling, backfilling? So you'd have the, you have the room availability, but it's just that it's when it peaks, then you're over a hundred percent, then that's where you can.
Right, right. Um.
Okay.
Peaks and valleys, and we're, we're trying to convince the Russians and the Chinese visitors, well, uh, in, in our, um, twenty twenty plan that was released at our last membership meeting by the chairman of the board. Um, he set a target of a hundred thousand Chinese. Where, where are they gonna stay?
Right.
How are they gonna get here? So, it's the seats and the rooms, but, uh, I, do we need more hotels? Yes. Do we need, uh, quicker, um, decision-making in order to accommodate the demand? I think, I think we're slowly, the industry's slowly heading towards that, and they actually say, you know, we'll, we'll give a little, take a little, uh, but they do realize that the, the higher spend are the Chinese and the Russians.
So.
And they are trying to accommodate the turnaways, yeah.
So, optimal, yeah, optimal is trying to market around those non-peak?
Yeah.
Because then you'd maximize everything, basically.
One point seven.
Thank you.
I could change that number.
Yeah, well, and that's, and, well, that's what's interesting, because, I mean, if you're turning away the projected, uh, uh, that was spoken of, anywhere between fifty to up in the hu- upwards of a hundred and seventy thousand visitors, then it means that you're turning that away when you're over a hundred percent occupancy. But then you also have months at a time, I think, the last market report I was looking at, we actually have four months of the year where we're sixty percent or below. So, it.
Yeah, if you review the G H R A, um, occupancy rates, which is what we use.
Right.
You're still, we're still at averaging seventy percent.
Right.
Around that. And then, and then you look at the newspaper and you see ads from local hotels saying, here's a local rate. It makes you wonder.
Sure.
Yeah, there are rooms, so.
Sure.
It, it, it's just a matter of, um, the visitors being informed about the best time to come.
Right, 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 right. And I'm, a lot of that's a function of weather and everything else, but I mean, but, but, but still, we can do more to make ourselves more attractive, because the rooms are there, they're just not there when everybody wants to come.
There is a push for, uh, ten thousand rooms. That's our goal.
Oh, total.
Yeah.
To add to the market.
Total, yes. Yeah, right now, we're at eight.
And that's, and market dri- would, will drive that. This business is no weapon.
And that will bring jobs and, uh, you know, monitor local economy.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the, uh, overall, uh, view on tourism presentation? If not, thank you very much, Debbie. We'll proceed then with the section two of the agenda, overview on employment. Gary? Thank you very much for joining us.
The latest report on employment from the payroll report was March two thousand thirteen. Uh, it showed that Guam employ- that Guam employment had declined, uh, very slightly, but was up by eight hundred twenty over the year. Uh, the most volatile, uh, area of employment is construction, that, uh, varies as more projects are added or as declines as they're completed. The, over the last, uh, year or so, we benefited partly from an increase in tourism, but partly at a rebound in the Ja- Japan market after the tsunami and earthquake. So, some of the gains that we've seen are kind of a resumption of normal activity, and we'll still probably expect to see gains next year, but not of the same magnitude we've seen in, in the past. The, uh, couple of new items of information I wanna focus on are the withholdings shown on the latest, uh, released financial statement from BBMR for the month ending May thirty-first. Are that the actual withholdings for May twelve to May thirteen, for the month of May, went down from about nineteen million to sixteen point six. That's about a twelve point nine percent decline. Uh, it's sometimes difficult to, uh, because of different payroll periods, that things aren't exactly equal on a year-to-year basis. But I think we may be beginning to see some of the effects of the sequestration on, uh, the federal payroll at the local level. And the sequestration will also have a effect on probably next year's, uh, section thirty funds, because the funds we've received for this year are in advance for the year. So, uh, there was also a report, I, I didn't bring it with me, from the Bureau of Statistics and Plans on the number of federal employees. And in the latest year re- released, that, that's down, so that is a factor in the section thirty funds. But the, uh, I mentioned before, the, the overall effect on the sequester, uh, on Guam's revenue, I calculated to be in the range of one to two percent. However, a bigger concern is the, in the construction industry, we have statistics from two sources. One is the building permits from, uh, for local projects from the Department of Public Works. Those are actually doing quite nicely. The, uh, year-to-date building permits, uh, for fiscal year thirteen with nine of the twelve months in are two hundred forty-four million compared to, uh, so, if you multiply that by another quarter, that would annualize it at three hundred twenty-five million, which is just about as much as fiscal year two thousand twelve with three hundred sixty-three million and quite a bit above fiscal year two thousand eleven of two hundred sixty million and above two hundred, uh, fiscal year two thousand ten of two hundred seventy-eight million. But, uh, the projects that occur on base are not included in the local building st- uh, statistics. And that represents, uh, about forty percent of the total construction that's going on. The combined total is around five hundred million. Um, the report we've, uh, produced shows that the Department of Defense contracts, well, let me just give some background. The, there's been an enormous number of appropriations for projects related to the Marine Corps relocation to Guam. Those, uh, have been, in, uh, the budget language, restricted from expenditures until additional studies are done. So, the Marine Corps relocation projects have been put on hold. But additionally, because of the sequester issues, it appears that other projects, not federal, uh, projects, not restricted by the Marine Corps relocation language, of which there's a considerable dollar amount, have also been restricted. Uh, for the calendar, or for the, both the fiscal and calendar year, but for the, for the first nine months of this uh, fiscal year, uh, three quarters of the fiscal year we're through already, we've only, uh, recorded twenty-one point nine million dollars in, uh, Department of Defense construction projects above five million dollars. That compares to the fiscal year totals of two thousand twelve of a hundred thirty-seven million, two thousand eleven, two hundred forty-four million, two thousand ten, three hundred seventy million, two thousand nine, a hundred, uh, ninety-two million, two thousand eight, two hundred fifty-two million. So, uh, this is the lowest level since nineteen ninety-eight, um, to date. So, if you combine the Department of Defense contracts and the local building permits, we're looking at an annualized level of approximately three hundred sixty-five million, uh, projected, which is, you know, in the range of twenty-five percent below the current level of activity. Given that construction projects, there's a, a lag of, uh, year or more, depending on the size of the project. Uh, we, and there's some large projects, uh, underway. We don't ex- expect, uh, decline in construction in the short term, as there's a number of new projects coming along, like the museum. But if the, uh, federal projects do not start coming, uh, getting, uh, contracted, uh, later in the fiscal year, it's likely to see a decline in construction employment. Construction is about ten percent of the total Guam employment and economy, so it's a smaller component than tourism, but it's the most volatile.
Uh, or employment in the other sectors?
Pretty much, uh, stability.
Stability.
A little bit of, uh, positive, positive, uh, from the tourism.
Any other questions on construction, Senator?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Just a quick question in regards to, so your projection for the next FY is three hundred sixty-five million dollars in possible construction projects?
Uh, that's pretty projected for fiscal year two thousand thirteen.
Fourteen. Of, of permitted projects, so
I don't have a forecast for the dollar amount next year, but usually the, uh, those are a pretty good indicator of projects that will occur a year or two out.
Are you tracking the kind of jobs or the wage, wages associated with the jobs that are being created?
We, yes.
We have about two, uh, the company that just recently hired about two hundred plus individuals. The question is, are they transplanted from the existing industries over to that company? And so it's really a wash in terms of possible employment numbers versus them hiring additional personnel and at what wage level? Because it does make a difference in terms of looking at the wages. If, if majority of these individuals are being hired at minimum wage, then, then we can anticipate what the withholding may be, and then the tax refund would be.
Uh, we have several sources of statistics on, uh, wages. We have the, um, payroll employment statistics, uh, by industry in the current employment report, which shows the, uh, average hourly earnings of, uh, non-supervisory workers in construction. We also have the occupational employment statistics, which provide, uh, detail of high occupation, such as carpenter, plumber, accountant, and so on. So, you can look at the trending in those, uh, occupational industries as well. Uh, well, construction has increased s- uh, I think about eight hundred jobs in the March numbers compared to a year ago.
Right.
Um, the, uh, other industries, like tourism-related, have gone up somewhat, so that I'm not sure that it's drawn too much from them. I'm sure occasionally a helper or an accountant would.
So, you just track, you track the new, the new jobs that are created, just from a holistic perspective, not necessarily? Okay, twenty percent of the jobs that were created are minimum wage, thirty percent are within the medium range, five percent is management?
Uh, we look at as a total snapshot of the economy, covering all of the jobs. Uh, we do have, uh, wage distribution that shows the wage categories they're in, and you can see how that's changed over time.
Okay, because I'm just looking at the number that you threw in our direction in May, ninety million dollars and a slight decline to sixteen point six. And I'm trying to, to understand what we could, we as a community can attribute that to, because, I mean, you're talking about three million dollars or slightly less than three million dollars in terms of withholding taxes within the economy, and then looking and matching it up with your numbers that reflect a, a very modest increase in jobs created during that same timeframe. So, what could we conceivably attribute that to? I mean, if it's an anomaly, then we understand. If it's one particular contract that lasted for thirty days, then we understand, but I don't think that that's likely.
Is it due to timing? Like, is it three pay periods versus two, or is it due to something else that defined?
In the May numbers?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure. Sometimes that happens.
Yeah.
Um,
Okay, well, you have, I guess.
So, I would, I would be watching that trend to see in the months going forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, more, because I thought the sequester didn't start until July, so, yeah.
This is a lot of the contracts already had initiated. It has a margin in terms of actual dollars being expended. It started to reduce the allocation towards contractors.
Okay.
So, it's that, started back in March.
So, the payroll though of actual employees won't happen until, as well as, uh, contracts.
Yes, right. And e- even in the federal government to some extent, because they knew they were getting budget cuts, they stopped hiring. So, there was some, at least marginal effect.
Does anyone have any indication, or, uh, what is the trend? Is it going to continue into fiscal year twenty fourteen, the sequester? Uh, uh, 'cause that was one thing I couldn't really glean from the conference I came back. Everybody was just saying it's, um, the uncertainty. Yeah, uh, uh, there was a, a projection that it may continue, but nobody would want it to really say what. And I was just curious of, in your own dealings, uh, as to, you know, because the biggest one, of course, is defense.
Yeah, the initial discussion, Mrs. Speaker, if I may interject with a, a couple of congressional representatives, is that right now, it's, there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty, only because they're spending the budget.
Right.
Uh, finalized the budget. Obviously, the US Senate is already moving in the direction of trying to minimize any cost reduction and application of sequestration. So, it's, it's where the House, they're trying to see if they can reconcile the number, so until the new fiscal year budget is dropped.
I'll give you an example. I was talking to someone from the D O D I G's office, and they weren't affected by the sequester.
Some, some have actually, uh, changed, you know, the, uh, sequester, uh, the effect of it. The o- the other thing is, you know, what was kind of, uh, interesting was I was talking to a couple of the, uh, federal employees this, over the weekend, and they said, well, you know, we're, we got our furlough, but now we're being asked to, uh, to make sure we have our overtime plan for the end of the fiscal year. So, so there's a plan on working overtime. So, it, it, I don't know, the federal government's still huge that, uh,
Right.
But I think what, what is, uh, going to be, uh, an issue for us and a concern is that the cuts are, uh, if, if they occur, and, which they will, even though we're seeing the budget surplus is actually shrinking, I mean, the budget deficit is actually shrinking, you know, which may cause Congress to, to change a little in, in terms of what, uh, expenditure runs gonna be in the next fiscal year. Um, but, uh, defense, according to Chuck Hagou, and some of his latest statements, saying they're, they're going to continue with some cuts that they're gonna have to, I think, so I think that's a concern.
And, Mr. Chair, um, with the impact to the line agencies, um, we provided a, a report, preliminary report back in March, and that was showing about six million dollars. Um, that was the impact at that time. We haven't done an update yet, but, um, that was the report.
That's six million in program funds.
Programs, that's correct.
And not, not wages or.
Gary, on the construction, do your figures show how many of the construction industry employees are age-two workers? And how does that, surely that impacts the, the amount of money that circulates and the amount of money that, um, is paid into income taxes and, and paid? Do you guys, uh, uh? That's it?
Any additional questions on the employment, uh, overview? Thank you very much, Gary. That's my speaker. Uh, item number three, uh, FY two thousand thirteen revenue collections, nine plus three, and then just the forecast, Mr. Reeves?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members, you know, I apologize for being, uh, tardy. When I was in the office yesterday and I printed out the, um, the agenda, it had July twenty-sixth, so I didn't, I thought the meeting was gonna be this Friday.
Yeah, I apologize.
And did not, um, um, make copies or print out the latest. The, um, two thousand, um, thirteen revenue collections, the last that we submitted was during the, um, the budget hearings, which was the eight-four. Um, and I know that the nine-three, um, projected, um, revenues for two thousand thirteen, I think we're submitting, um, something today to the speaker.
Yes.
Um, today. So, again, I apologize, I, I don't have that with me right now, and that includes also the two thousand thirteen forecast. If you may, you know, I could go ahead and email you the, um,
Sure.
Email you what we're gonna be sending the, uh, speaker today.
Can you do that and make sure I send it to everybody else?
Okay, so I'll just forward it to you again.
Um, the, is that the same with the long-range forecast?
Yes, and, and the, uh, latest long-range, uh, forecast, um, I believe I submitted one in March to your office. Um, um, and that included, uh, the make-work-pay payments, um, 'cause you asked me to go ahead and include it in the expenditures. I included that, but what it, the numbers were different, because, um, on the letter that we sent the US Treasury requesting for a payment schedule.
Right.
Um, it differed from that one that I. Um, it differed from that one that I, um, gave you on March. So what I can do is I can go ahead and correct, and I wanted to also include other expenditures such as the H-study on that report and then, and provide copies to everybody.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
Uh, so there is a plan on the twenty, the twenty-two million dollars to the IRS to, is it to be taken out from section thirty-one?
That's correct. Um, the, um.
So this may, this number here may be further adjusted?
No, the, because it would be in two thousand fifteen.
I see.
So, so the first request that we had was about five million for like four or five years. And then with the letter that we, um, sent the Treasury, um, it was one million, one some million the first year, which is fifteen, and then four or five million the next four years. Yes, that's correct.
And is it interest-free?
That was my question. But that has not been approved.
Yeah, it had not been approved, that's right.
It's been submitted and requested.
Negotiation.
That's correct. That's correct. The initial request was, uh, not accepted, and then they resubmitted another request.
That's correct, cause we wanted to use the, uh.
Right.
Compact.
Compact, yeah. All right. Okay, the, uh, presentation of the two thousand and fourteen provision for tax refund calculations, Department of Labor and Tax.
I, I guess, um, I, I just used the last presentation that I did, uh, on the budget hearing. Uh, basically what, what we, we normally do is we just follow the law when we do the, the estimation for the provisions for refunds. So, uh, the first page basically is a summary of all the, the, the five, five, uh, projected provisions for refunds from two thousand fourteen all the way back to two thousand eighteen. So if, if you wanna look at the two thousand fourteen, uh, basically we just look at, uh, page two, if you go to page two. We just, uh, uh, fill in the blanks for the last fiscal ye- pre-fiscal years. And we, we total those, uh, uh, actual pay and estimated amounts, uh, into, and divided by three. Uh, likewise with the, uh, the corporate refunds. A corporate refunds journey for the last ten, fifteen years, they, they normally asked around forty-five million, uh, every year. And, uh, by that, uh, we add those and basically we look at the changes and, uh, and we, we concentrate, uh, mainly on the EATC because it's been growing for the last ten years. So, um, we were adding each year three point seven and for the ATC, um, uh, two million. So what we did was we looked at the last four years, uh, on the increases of these two, uh, uh, credits, and we divide them by four. So we, we normally just use that as a, as a guide moving forward. So we, just based on numbers, we, we estimated about a hundred and twenty-nine point six million dollars for FY fourteen. And, uh, going back, we just do the same thing, but, uh, at least in two thousand fifteen, we, uh, in, in fifteen, we used, uh, an average of twenty-five hundred per taxpayers. We normally look at the last four years, how many taxpayers asked, asked for refund. We divide that by four, and we, we normally, uh, for the last, past three years, there's an average of twenty-five hundred per taxpayer, per claim. So we use that, and when we multiply that, uh, we, we estimate it, for example, for two thousand thirteen, a hundred and sixteen million dollars, uh, for that particular year. We need that number to move forward. So, uh, same procedures to try and get the, the, um, provision for refund for two thousand fifteen, it's about a hundred and thirty million. Uh, going to the, uh, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, we do the same thing, except we use an average of twenty-six hundred per taxpayer. In, in other words, uh, the two thousand twelve right now is showing an average of twenty-six hundred per taxpayers. Uh, so we use that number to, to move forward. And when you, you add up the numbers, um, for sixteen, we estimate a hundred and thirty. Um, same thing we use for seventeen, uh, we use twenty-six hundred, uh, per taxpayer, um, and also for eighteen. So if it's, if you look at the summary, it's pretty steady, uh, the first page from fourteen to eighteen, uh, it, it's really, it's really an estimation of what, what the, the refund should be. But once you get the actuals, it, it, it'll give you a, a, a clear picture of what it is. Uh, like for example, in, in two thousand twelve, we're estimating, uh, that we should probably be paying a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. We paid up so far, uh, sixty-eight. We have thirty-five million dollars ready to go, and there's about two million, two point five million, uh, our, our problem returns. So we, we, we process so far for two thousand twelve, a hundred and five million dollars. So we're looking at maybe another, another fifteen million, eighteen million dollars to process for two thousand twelve. So if you look at the trend for the last, uh, uh, three years, you're, you're looking at a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and, uh, a, a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty-three for this, uh, for fiscal year, for tax year two thousand twelve. So, you know, the, the estimate is gonna be around that, that figure. So, uh, it's just, it's a matter of, uh, employment. I mean, are there, will there be more people? But one, one thing for sure, we, we, we noticed there's an increase of, every year there's an increase of number of taxpayers asking for refund.
Asking for refund.
Yes, so that's, that's the trend.
John, in any of these numbers, for example, in like FY two thousand tw- or tax year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, those are actual numbers. Are any, any of those numbers, like the one fourteen and the one nineteen, inclusive of, uh, interest due for that tax year?
These are refunds, by my understanding, these are.
So, so no, no interest?
Yes, that's my understanding.
This is used to, to add to the calculation when we.
That's my understanding that when they do, it's, it's based on refunds.
On refunds?
Yes.
And not on, no, no.
No interest.
Interest is not calculated.
Yes, I mean, in, in some of our reports, uh, basically you'll, you'll show you like the ones that we normally give out, you'll show you the, the, uh, the refund and, and expected interest.
Right.
So we only pick up the refunds.
Okay.
But interest really now should be almost.
Very, very little, yes.
Like catch up, cause the bonds have left thirteen million in interest.
Yes.
So interest should not be, I think, huh? So, so interest hopefully should not even be close to a million or two.
Well, like, like, for, like, yeah, like for example, um, you know, I have a report here that, uh, as of July first, uh, what, what expecting interest on, on a thirty, I think thirty-seven, thirty-seven point six million, we're only looking at three hundred thousand dollars to pay. And that, that basically is the prior years that have been.
That are mixed in there.
Yes, that mixed in that are, are converted from E and S to A. In other words, they were there for, for some time.
So John, let me just ask, ask the question here by me, um, if, April, April fifteenth, okay, and, and under the court order, you're supposed to pay by August fifteenth, okay?
October fifteenth.
I'm sorry, October fifteenth, so six months. Is, uh, any interest owed during that? When does interest begin to accrue?
If, if people file on time, uh, it, it basically starts on June first.
June first.
Yes.
Why, so?
It's, it's usually, uh, four months, I think, yeah. So you got April fifteen, April, so.
So June, July, August?
No, I'm sorry, two, two months.
September. So, so it begins to accrue June one?
Yes.
Okay. So there will always be a little bit of interest?
Yes, right, we are, we're paying a little bit interest, like for example, for, for the two thousand twelve that we processed of, um.
Everything you pay through June first, you would not have taken interest in?
Well, it, it, it's, it's a, so right now for like two thousand twelve, we process at thirty-four point nine million. We have about two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars interest that we have to pay, so that's, that's building from, from June first.
And I know the rate and formula. What is the current rate right now?
Three percent.
It's come down now?
Yes.
Yes, that's the IRS.
That's theirs, yes.
That's two percent. Thank you.
Any additional questions on the, John? I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Senator.
I guess, I'm just, uh, kinda confused here. We've got two different projections for what the tax refund liability might be. How's that, and it differ by about fifteen percent? How's, how's that going to be reconciled for purposes of budget?
Yes, you mean that, that the, um, twenty-nine? And he adopted it in the budget, right? Fifteen, or that's a middle.
We have a sure fall of seventeen. We have a sure fall, the difference was seventeen.
Well, with regards to the, uh, projections, both you have DRT's projection, then you also have when we meet and decide what we're gonna do in the provisions. Anything over, it, it is a priority to make sure that the tax refunds are paid, so that will go first. Then we have reserves that, you know, will hopefully cover, um, some of those unpaid payments if it exceeds our, um, our estimate. Yeah. But in other words.
Again, Senator, also, this is a, these are just estimations, and, and do we really see the facts? Uh, it, it, it's a number that we, 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 we just follow the particular, what the law says. Uh, you take the average of the last three years, and then you look at the changes, uh, you know, it, it's, it's very hard to, to project what the provisions for refunds. If you look at two thousand nine and ten, it was supposed to be a higher because we got the making-work-pay credit that we got, and, and we were paying out, uh, a lot. I mean, we paid, I think, twenty-six, twenty-six million every year. And, and, and even with that, it was a little, little bit lower than what it is in two thousand eleven and twelve. I mean, in, in, in nine and, and ten, we were only paying out about a hundred and fourteen million, a hundred and fifteen million. But why, why, I mean, it's, it's very unpredictable. You have more, more taxpayers that are, 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 are filing now, and, and, and I guess in one year, I saw that the corporations are adding more, uh, uh, another million to their, to their request. So it's, it's very unpredictable to, to, to look at, uh, what the actual will be. Uh, I think a hundred and thirteen, uh, if, if you look at a hundred and twenty-nine, you look at twelve, we're estimating a hundred and twenty-three. Uh, you know, the other year it might go up, it might go down, but these are just numbers that we, we look at. And, uh, I know it's, it's pretty high, and, uh.
I think, I think if we were, you know, I think if we were talking about a gap of, you know, several million dollars, uh, that's probably easy to recover from. But we're talking about a seventeen billion dollar gap. And I understand, you know, that until the actuals come in, you don't know, but you've got basically, what, two thousand ten, eleven, twelve actuals, uh, you know? I don't know, I just, I just think like, that's a large gap to, uh, you know, dismiss.
I agree, I mean.
That's my, that was my question. Thank you, Senator. That was my question too. That's a seventeen. And even if you cut it in half, you know, have an S bill, it just, that's still eight million to recover, it's quite significant.
Yeah, and what we approved last year was a hundred and thirteen also, right? Or was it a hundred? And then you added thirteen, fourteen, I'm sorry, a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, because of the deappropriation. Yeah, so we, we provisioned a hundred and fourteen in this fiscal year.
Remember talking, this is, Senator, uh, Mr. Chair, this is for FY twenty fourteen.
Yes, no, yeah, that's correct.
And going into, knowing that there's already this differential.
Yes, no, we understand.
How we can reconcile, how we can reconcile it.
Yes, Senator. Gotta be the chance, yes, Senator.
John, on the, um, on the taxpayer filer status, do you have a, um, a demographic status in terms of the filer, if they were?
Um, you mean, how many people are requesting for refunds?
Yeah, that, but I'm also looking at, on the recent discussions on the report from Interior, um, there were questions on, on s- some methodologies. And I was wondering when you're, when you're collecting taxes, are you, do you have a demographic, uh, citizenship-wise, uh, profile on?
No, we can't, that's, that's, I can't do that.
Okay. So the tax, taxpayer, tax filer is just a number, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But you do stratify it, don't you? Like how many below, or earning below?
Oh, yes, we, we can, we can ask, yeah, we can ask, like, like this, what does the chairman say? We can ask them how many people are getting between this and this.
Yes.
Like, I don't know, we can't do that.
We cannot do that.
Right.
Right, and, and the purpose being that the demographic, or, or even if you just used it by, uh, job categories and employment, you would see what, who, what, what class were qualifying for the earned income tax credit, which we're paying, which represents what upwards of forty percent of the annual payout, right?
Yes, it's, you, you're, you're saying right now it's about forty-seven million?
Right.
So it's about maybe, uh, forty, forty-five percent of what we, we pay out?
I guess maybe the, if I could frame it, help frame the question, since this is something that we're always interested in.
Right.
As well as, John, could, could you, could, could you work with Gary, for example, and say, the average waitress makes? You know, this, the, this wage, what this employment category, you know, qualifies for EIC? Or, uh, construction workers don't, because they're earning twenty dollars an hour if they're journeymen, but, uh, retail service workers do. Is that possible to try and stratify the income and then compare it to the average wage paid by that wage?
The biggest problem, uh, is, uh, it's, uh, yeah, the, the biggest difficulty.
The study would be, you'd have to look at the tax data because it's, you, people, it, it would only work if they were a single person working on their own. Because if you have a family, then the, the husband and the wife income is combined, and the deductions are associated with the children, so different, uh.
We all know what we want.
Yeah.
It's appear to be that we can get it from.
The stat, the status of filing, yeah, I mean, it, there, there's gotta, I mean, at least just to put it on the table, it's, it's something that we're gonna have to end up, I think, if we continue to pursue, uh, any type of realistic reimbursement. Would include some sort of formula that would have to, if you're gonna take into consideration economic benefit, you would already be, also be taking into consideration what your payout was in terms of, in terms of status and how much it costed you as well. I mean, if, if somebody was a, a wage earner and we're calculating in terms of revenue tax, uh, and, and for the aggregate of what's coming in, you'd also calculate what's, what's refunded as well on qualifying for programs.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, uh, John, we just had a, a note here that the, according to the AS four hundred, in, interest paid on refunds, October twelfth to June thirteen, uh, five hundred thousand, four ninety-nine, nine, four hundred ninety-nine, nine seventy.
That's, right now we based on, uh, we pay our refund based on first in, first out, so it also includes corporation, so, uh, it, it.
That number.
Yeah, it could, if, if we run one corporation that filed, uh, and it's, it's a huge amount, and it's, for like, say, for example, two thousand seven or eight, and it just converted to an A, then that would produce a lot of interest.
Okay, all right.
But those are fewer and fewer, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you've just about cleaned out.
The problem is right now, um, the, the ones that are E and S, uh, the, the projected interest, uh, is, um, about twenty, two hundred seventeen plus twenty-eight, so you, you do about two hundred and forty-five for the E and S right now that are, are, uh, that are problem returns.
These are already filed, we're trying to.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions on the provision for refunds? Thank you very much, John. Uh, the FY two thousand and fourteen SES revenue recommendation to the, the Turangwahan. Um, we also have, uh, as part of the, uh, formation of the special revenue, um, what the Special Economic Service Group, the establishment of the Special Accounting Service Group, uh, which met, uh, earlier. I wanna ask, uh, Mr. Ricky Hernandez from the Office of Finance and Budget to just give us a short synopsis of that meeting that, that occurred. Uh, with regards to the revenue projections.
How many members of the SAS and Senators? Uh, the Special Accounting Service, uh, met four times this fiscal year on, uh, April fourth, uh, April twenty-fourth, May third, and July seventeen. Uh, during the July seventeenth meeting, the SAS members discussed and approved, uh, a recommendation for the SES with regards to the FY fourteen estimated revenues. Uh, present at the meeting were representatives from the DOA, uh, DRT, BBMR, uh, Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and the Bureau of Information Technology, as well as the OFB. Uh, prior to the approval of the revenue estimates, uh, recommendation, the SAS discussed the issues related to the, uh, territorial education facilities fund, the TEFF, and the, uh, newly created GMHA Healthcare Trust and Development Fund, I think that was Public Law thirty-two sixty. Uh, the discussions surrounding the TEFF involved, uh, projected shortfall this fiscal year twenty thirteen, and if the estimate for. Uh the discussion surrounding the TEFF involved the projected shortfall this fiscal year twenty thirteen and if the estimate for the special fund for FY fourteen is attainable. Um the discussion regarding the GMHA healthcare trust and development fund was simply that it was not estimated in FY fourteen budget because it was subsequent to the executive uh budget request submittal. So uh but notwithstanding the discussions of these funds, uh the members of the SAS unanimously approved the recommendation to the SES to adopt the revenue estimates per the FY fourteen executive budget requests. And that also, I guess that includes, that does not include the the newly established GMHA healthcare trust and development fund.
Thank you very much.
And that's this bill here?
Yes, yes.
This is the adoption.
That is that is whatever.
So it still, we haven't reconciled that the big seventeen million dollar difference in tax refunds.
Okay.
That that's the issue that Senator you had brought, right?
Yes.
That has yet to be reconciled.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did I hear Mr. Hernandez correctly? Can you repeat your statement as it relates to TEFF?
Well, the SAS discussed the TEFF and their uh the discussion was running a a ten point nine million dollar projected, uh it was called um.
A shirt.
Yeah, it was called a projected revenue enhancement of ten point nine million. And uh I guess that was in the BBMR tracking, it shows a ten point nine, it has a tracking of I think about nineteen or twenty million. And there was a ten point nine million uh re- projected revenue enhancement. But um when we in the in our discussions, we had uh uh discussed that if is that if that's collectible and and whatnot. But um with regards to the just the approval of our recommendation to the SES, they decided to stick with the uh FY fourteen estimate of I think it was twenty seven million.
Was that revenue enhancement the co-? The revaluation, the com- comma or whether and we're not gonna collect those, you don't think?
Because the comma is still having.
In the coma?
The comma's in the, correct. That's correct, commas in the comma. Maybe ask John to get an update.
Yes, well, when we go to the FY two thousand and fourteen. Thank you very much Ricky. Uh so that was the um the result of the Special Accounting Service Group uh recommendation, yes. At this time would go ahead and and John, uh and John maybe just uh give a brief overview of the revenue uh presentation. He just wants to see your notes. So can you give a brief uh presentation of the revenue projection of the administration uh in the it's FY fourteen budget submittal in uh. This is the correct copy, me?
With the exception of the scribbles, those are just my notes.
Mr. Reed?
Okay, with the um the general fund, the um uh total income taxes, thank you, total income taxes which included the um the set aside for the provision for tax refund, it came out to two hundred ninety one million, five eighty five, two hundred ninety six. Uh business privilege tax, total business privilege tax which included the set asides for pharmaceutical fund and the MPC um tax credit. Um came out to two hundred and twenty two million eighty four thousand six hundred and seventy three with a total taxes of five hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and sixty nine thousand nine sixty nine. Uh federal resources which also included the overpayment reconciliation or the set aside um and immigration fee, total federal sources is fifty five million, seven hundred and ninety one thousand, two hundred and forty six. We have uh use of money on property was one million, six hundred and twenty seven thousand, six fifty five. Total licenses licenses fees and permits was four four million, two hundred and forty thousand, sixty six dollars. The department charges was one million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixteen, total general fund revenues was five seventy seven million, one forty one thousand and four hundred and fifty two. Total available for appropriation was five hundred and sixty five million, five ninety eight, five hundred and ninety eight thousand, six hundred and twenty three. Total. Total special um fund revenues amounted to a hundred and sixty four million, seven hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and eighty five. So then the um the uh federal matching, total federal matching grants and aid revenue was four hundred forty three million, six hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and seventeen. Um which gave a grand total for to include general fund revenue, special fund revenue and federal matching grants of seven hundred and seventy three millions, nine hundred and sixty nine thousand, one hundred and twenty five.
Yes, questions? Senator, I'm gonna get Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh John, just look at at your numbers for special fund revenues and I only saw that I can reconcile in my mind in terms of what number we're working with. Obviously, the number that's coming down from the Chief Executive is twenty six million, one hundred thirty two thousand, seven hundred twenty seven. The number that we were just presented at the inception of this discussion was in the neighborhood of twenty six million, nine hundred two dollars and eight hundred seventy six.
I'm sorry, which special fund was that, Sunday?
Tourist attraction fund.
Tourist, okay, TAF, okay.
So the number that we we had just based on some of the presentations this morning for fiscal year fourteen is reflecting twenty six, nine oh two. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, in this particular case, uh just wanted to to make sure that we're reconciling the numbers and we're tracking. So if that's the number that's coming from the Chief Executive's office, then then obviously based on the decision of the committee, we'll proceed with that number versus what was presented earlier because.
Just keep in mind that the tracking and and the projection to the end of the fiscal year um included all the other, it included the three month projection. So it included the projection all the way to the end of the year.
Right.
When we did this, we did this back in December um of last year, so the projection was.
No, no, I understand the timing in terms of when this was actually presented to the legislature.
And and we do know GBB did approach us and advised us on on some of their projections to the end of the fiscal year, what they felt would be the TAF for um for uh next fiscal year.
So you recommend it to the committee that we.
I'm recommending the still the twenty six million, one thirty, yes, that's correct, Senator.
Okay, just just so that this can already be there, Mr. Speaker, in terms of, thank you.
Yes.
Yet the TF, um I believe it's. And the assumption was the property tax, the reevaluation to be completed, maybe John can explain um more in detail um what the project. Um I do know that the project is, you know, close to completion with the the exception of the one part, which is the appraisal um part. And I I I I do know that the legislature is discussing it, it was in Bill ninety five or eighty five, I'm not sure. It it was one of the bills that the Speaker um submitted, and so that's something that uh that we're hoping will be completed so the appraisal can be done and we can start realizing the revenues on the TF. Maybe John can give a more detail of the project itself.
I guess part part of the increase in the uh the uh the fund basically was supposed to come from the uh the revaluation of the entire, I don't know, of of real property. Um there's some bit uh I guess delay on on accomplishing that. Uh we started our our first part last year, uh and that's been basically to update our record. So that's basically uh done and we're we're trying to get the the data to to make those changes in our on our data. So uh basically for two thousand thirteen, we're we're looking at some increases in in the real property taxes. Uh the 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 bulk of the data, the increases when we actually get the the appraisal to come in and then appraise the property, that's the second part that we're we're looking at. We did did an RFP uh this year, uh so it's just that the 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 timing of it to to realize the revenue, uh this uh this coming fiscal year is is not gonna, it's not gonna happen. Because they they need at least a minimum of twelve months to to do the project. So we're we're still looking at pursuing that aspect to try and do another RFP out to try and get it, try and catch for the for the next fiscal year, so. Uh but at least the the first part that we actually did go out is we we were updating our existing data. We had our pitometer go out there, we we're now cross checking with the original data that was done back in in nineteen ninety three. So we're updating our data and and from that, we're gonna see some increases in in the property tax.
Yeah.
But it'll be based on the the ninety ninety three rates.
So I guess the there's two revenue sources from this reevaluation process. One is the escape assessment process of capturing that, and the other is the reevaluation of the property and reappraisal of the property. So uh when we had the uh the presentation on the revenues last week, uh you know, they they felt that there was going to be growth in the capturing of the escape assessment as well. And that's why the presentation of the numbers still increased from the current nineteen adopted nineteen million dollars of base revenue, maybe you might wanna call it. And so they're repr- they're recommending that twenty seven million dollars for real estate taxes. Yes.
John, what about new construction, like a new house that's built today? Um I we're still trying to uh research this with your people, but how is new construction evaluated? What I was told is they were evaluated and adjusted downward back to nineteen ninety three, even those new constructions, is that correct?
That that is correct because the the last revaluation that was done was back in nineteen ninety three. So every every new building now uh that we get is is based on that rate. Uh even the the escape assessment that we're doing now, we're we're finding a lot that that it's gonna be based on that rate. So uh until such time we we do another revaluation, then that that will be another another uh rate that we'll be be uh using to move forward.
But but what is the basis? Here's a house built today that may cost two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, and when we went back and tested it, you're taking that two hundred thousand dollar house and sometimes it'll go down to as much as hundred and fifty thousand or so. And then that's what it's based on, as opposed to the cost today. That's the part, I'm trying to grapple around my mind, what was the rationale? Why is new construction being reevaluated to nineteen ninety three values as opposed to taking new construction based on today's cost? That's the part that I'm, my mind is struggling.
It's it's that's what basically what the law says, I mean you you and and that's, you know, that's why it it's it's been over twenty years since we lasted in revaluation. So that's why we're 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 trying to do it and and uh i- it's just timing.
But you have new construction, you have the cost today. Who said it had to be, that it was never in existence back in nineteen ninety three?
Do you have an opinion from your uh counsel that's that says that you have to discount that, I guess?
The taxes have to, you gotta remember that taxes have to be fair.
Yes, no, we have.
So if if you're 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 current right now, you have a house and you were taxing it, that we cannot treat differently than how you're taxing the house. I mean, your house is 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 being taxed at this this rate, just because your house is built today, we're gonna try to treat this person differently, I don't think that's that's uh equal protection on 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 taxes. No, but what what actually you're saying uh uh. I know, but.
I'm gonna pay license and all that based on today's price of thirty thousand. That's the part, I mean, my staff, when they came to tell me, I said, you gotta be joking, I I mean, I've been trying to wrap my mind around to understand the rationale.
You you have to treat taxes fairly equally. You you can't, you can't say I'm gonna tax you this because just because your house is new, I'm gonna tax you at a higher rate, so you you can't do that.
I know, but can can we get the legal basis for saying you can't?
It states in the law that this is the 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 la- you use the rate that was last appraised, that if you if you read the statute, they've been doing it for years.
No, no, I understand, but but you couldn't, you couldn't appraise that property that was built in two thousand thirteen and ninety three.
Yeah.
So the last appraisal would be the two thirteen.
Correct.
Yeah, that's that's according to the law, because that's what we we we're taxing everybody.
I know, but can we just get, can we just get that, yeah, put down, just for the new construction? Not, yeah, for the new construction that's added to the new uh tax assessment rule.
And and John, would it be, maybe this is also something that's valuable to us, Mr. Chair, would it be then your recommendation that after this next evaluation or valuation, that we include in the law that this thing be real time going forward?
Yeah, I I think there was a proposed change in the law reset about a few years back to follow the California law, and that's that's something that probably you're looking at. I mean, you know, it's 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 different. So our law says you use the last uh revalue or last uh appraisal done that was done according to the law, that's that's what's been used for the last twenty years. So I mean, that's that's something that, you know, uh and it's it's because of the fairness of tax.
We understand that, sure.
That's 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 the whole thing, we can't say.
I don't think any member wants to.
That your house, that we're taxing you now, you have a three bedroom, and we're taxing you at this rate, just because now my house is brand new, it's gonna be at a higher rate, I don't think.
Higher value.
A higher value, the rate is still the same.
The rate is still the same.
No, but but the value is determined by 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 the the last appraisal that was done, that's how it's determined in the rate. Yes, the rate is always the same, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If the rate's, but but the 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 way you you determine the the value is is equally the same as what was done back in in nineteen ninety three.
If it's formula, if it's formula based on, Mr. Chair, it just seems like the best thing to do, and I understand, no, I don't think anybody on this panel wants to go out and, you know, uh uh retroactive or treat anybody disparately at this point. But the recommendation possibly should be then, that once we are on a level playing field and we're gonna pay millions of dollars for this uh this 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 up to date study that we're supposed to be doing every three years, that going forward now, we say this is the benchmark now. So there's a notification that going, it it's it's gonna be uh you know, based on 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 the valuation going forward. Uh and and you know, that that market not not, you know, because it might be another twenty years again that we don't do the the valuation.
But like even John, maybe not new construction, but just a sale. Say my house that I built in ninety two was a hundred and ninety, but if I were to sell it today and the person that bought it bought it for five hundred. Because there's two new houses next to me as opposed to the two shacks that were next to me in ninety two, the value's gonna be different. You mean to tell me that that person's gonna be paying the same tax that I've been paying since nineteen ninety two because I built it in ninety two for a hundred ninety six and he purchased it for five hundred?
Remember, uh if if we had done this back then, every three years, now it's every five years, you're gonna see that the the fluctuation of taxes are gonna go up and down because value goes up, value goes down. So we're not really losing, because if 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 the economy is down, you're gonna see if we did if we did it every three years, you're gonna see some some years will be up, some will be down. I remember a lot of the the in the in the previous years, a lot of the realists are saying that the values have gone down.
But some people have actually come in, John, to the Board of Equalization and requested a challenge.
Yes, that that's one of their, and everybody's afforded that that opportunity, yes.
So but we've actually seen, so how do you treat that then? How do you, how do you then, how does the Board of Equalization allow you to reduce that? You know what I mean? Because if the law says no, it's gotta go back to that, and the guy comes in and challenges his real estate tax based on the valuation, how are they able to get a change in their tax when that value's fixed to nineteen ninety three and you can't use any other value? So has anybody been able to get a change in their tax bill due on the real estate through a challenge through the Board of Equalization between nineteen ninety three and today? Have you actually?
I mean, I I think that would normally happen when 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 somebody wants uh to sell a property.
Yeah.
And then they 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 look at that and they then they realize that uh you know, that the values have gone down, the values have gone up. Taxpayer, they see that it goes down, that's to their advantage because they they pay a little bit less.
Less in the tax, in the gains.
But as far as as application wise, if you read the statute, you say that that every, there there's a formula that you use. And and it says that if you fail, I'm trying to recall now the statute, if you fail to you to do a reevaluation where it's required, then you use the last. That's the law, I just remembered, that's what it said.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing, we just use the last.
So but my question was, has anybody been able to get a change in their tax? So, but my question was, has anybody been able to get a change in their tax assessment, tax bill, real estate, through the Board of Equalization be-
I, I would assume, I, I gotta go back to my-
Can, can you look at that? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah.
Very curious, and to see how that is allowed in the law.
John, how much should you collect in TFF this year? Because in the last Budget Act, we anticipated thirty.
Yes, that was, that's what precipitated this discussion, because I remember this very clearly from last year.
Yes.
And, and I think even, e- even, even if comma takes care of that, Mr. Chair, I think we need to do it in law.
Yeah.
So that, so that we understand now that change.
Right.
John, I, I know you got the two percent here, which is standard, right, so is there a, is, is there, uh, is it gonna be the executive policy for this fiscal year once again to, uh, start the fiscal year by implementing the fifteen percent reserve?
The two percent for, uh, two thousand fourteen?
Thirteen digits.
For, for two percent, the governor would like that to go to the, um, for the HAYE study, I, I think he did mention that, um, already. Um, as for the, um, implementing the fifteen, uh, percent, uh, reserve, I think it is a good management tool. Um, you know, it, it helps the departments, you know, look at their accounts, um, you know, if they're struggling, we're there to help them. Um, and, but, you know, in some cases where they're okay and they're holding the line, um, we can still save.
Okay, so, but John, your, your allotment schedule though, won't, won't necessarily be based on that though, right, at least for the first couple of quarters?
Uh, no, the allotment schedule is based less the res- fifteen percent reserve. Um, what we do sometimes, um, if there's a need on the, um, in the, uh, start of the fiscal year, we move allotments up to cover, um, that, and then usually it's sometime in, um, July, August, when we start releasing a lot of the reserves, um, to these agencies. Um, this year, this fiscal year two thousand thirteen, it came just a little bit, um, earlier because of the, uh, the, um, the appropriations, so some of the agencies have a little less. Um, so we had to accommodate them a little earlier.
Cause I know John and Bill, and we were really, a lot of us were really elated at the release that followed the last budget hearing that we had, that there's significant improvement with regard to public safety, um, and the hirings and the like. I, I was just, I, I do have to have a conversation again with DYE this afternoon, and my question really is based on at least making sure that those, uh, vacancies that are budgeted roll into the new fiscal year, cause if that happens, it may stymie their hiring capabilities in terms of that allotment res- uh, release schedule, so I, if they're, if, if they're budgeted vacancies and they're GG ones are let go, then that sounds, sounds fine, but I don't know how you could realize that, that, 'cause I know it's gonna take more than two to three months to hire what's been put out there. So I, I'm just concerned about that, John.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, I'm looking at DOC, a lot of the overtime, and, and that is because of that, um, you know, the, the, um, ability to hire correction officers and having them stay is becoming difficult, so they have to have, uh, existing employees, um, 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 get overtime. With regards to the projection, expenditure projection to, to the end of the fiscal year, um, you know, what, what the analyst actually does is go into the AS four hundred and see the actual payments that were, that were paid out. Um, you know, there are some contracts, a good example, uh, maybe like a, a lease rent or a rent contract that's like ten thousand dollars a month. Um, when it comes time for us to do the, um, the, the, uh, projection or the eight-four-nine-three, um, what happens is that, um, sometimes invoices are not processed. Maybe the agency didn't receive it yet, or it just hasn't been processed yet, so it won't show on, as a payment on that particular month, so the, the analyst has to consider that, um, for the, um, remaining two, three months of the fiscal year, and so that's why you'll probably see a lot higher, um, um, expenditures in the last two, three months.
Yeah, it's just the warm bodies that I'm concerned about, especially in the critical areas, John, so.
I, I think we're given flexibility, I think, um, the committee in appropriation provided us the lump sum, uh, budget last year, which is, which was good.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Chair, thanks, John.
Thank you very much. So, any additional questions on the revenue? If not, uh, is there a motion to, um, adopt or recommend to the legislature, um, a revenue number for the, uh, FY two thousand fourteen? Senator Blas?
That's for, for the Special Economic Service.
Okay, alright, there's a motion to, uh, recommend to the legislature the, uh, revenue numbers as presented by Mr. Reyes. Um, the voting members are, of course, the members of the SES, so can I get the, uh, show of hands on the adoption of the revenues? You wanna move the, amend the motion?
Well, I'm, I'm okay with all the numbers except for two.
Two.
And that is, is the, the tax refund number.
Sure.
As well, uh, as, uh, and the, uh, real property. Other than that, I'm fine with every other number, so I, I would vote, based on that, it's yes, except for. I don't know, I don't, yeah, I don't know how you would record that.
I don't know how I would, I did myself.
Yes, except for two areas.
Okay, so, uh, there's a motion to amend the motion? That the recommendation would be subject to-
Well, that's what, I don't know if the others do the same.
Yeah, so.
I, I'm the only one who feels that way, because, you know, especially on, on the real property, I do remember specifically that we had this, and, and this is déjà vu, uh, again, we haven't learned.
Well, maybe we can, we can put a special, I, I mean, just note for the record, uh, concerns raised with regards to the provision for refunds and the TFF revenue projection, but-
Other than that, yes.
The motion is to adopt the revenue presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so, all in favor of adopting the revenue presentation? Okay, motion passes. That concludes the, uh, agenda of the Special Economic Service, uh, meeting this morning. I wanna thank, uh, all the members of the legislature for, uh, sitting with us and listening on this and participating, and of course, to the members of the Special Economic Service. Thank you very much for your participation, uh, and presentation this morning, and we are hereby adjourned.